May first, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting. Would like to rise from the place, please. Alright. Seeing no audience, I will skip bullet number two, move on to number three, business items.
Okay, so we are discussing, after having an introduction at the last Planning Commission meeting, we're going through twenty eighteen comp plan amendments, primarily the site-specific amendments, because most of the text amendments are simply routine updates that we have to do every time that, like, the transportation improvement program is updated, or we acquire a new park, or anything like that. I'll just go through them fairly quickly, if that's okay, and then you can just ask any questions, or make any comments about each one that you want me to address. So we have three site-specific amendments this year, two of which have been initiated by the city, and one of which has been submitted by a developer. The two city amendments are kind of, we're trying to address, or kind of proactively deal with some issues in both of those neighbors, neighborhoods, that have made it difficult for people to develop and improve their properties. The Crawford Road Amendment is the first one. Crawford Road is a private street that is off of Bethel, and it's very highly constrained. The road itself, as developed, is maybe fifteen feet wide, and it's all owned jointly by the people who own the lots along that road. So anything that's gonna be done out there would have to be agreed upon by the majority of the owners. So that's one reason why it's been very difficult for that road to be improved and kept improved. The lots out there are small, and they were rezoned from residential to commercial about fifteen years ago, kind of thinking that maybe that whole corridor along there was going to go commercial, and someone would buy up all those properties, and do one commercial development with, using all of them, but that hasn't happened. And so what has happened is that now that everybody has a non-conforming land use on their property, they're zoned commercial, but they still have single-family homes, they can't do anything with them. It's very hard for them to get loans, non-conforming building, non-conforming use. They can't expand, it's hard for them to maintain, for the empty lots that are there, there's a couple, they can't build houses, and nobody can do anything on a road like that, dead-end road, with such a tiny piece of property as an individual parcel. So what we've had is a lot of deterioration of that neighborhood, and a lot of code enforcement problems, the police have responded to a lot of drug use, squatting, things like that, and the, kind of, the feeling among some of the property owners that have been spoken with is, hey, we'd like to make some improvements out here, we really don't wanna be slum lords, you know? We wanna be able to improve, and, you know, attract better renters, and maybe we wanna sell to a small family, or somebody that's looking for a starter home, and so we'd really like it if you guys could go back to having a residential zoning on this property. And so that's what the city is proposing to do here, is simply to kind of revert the zoning back to what it was a number of years ago, and hope that this will help the neighborhood kind of revitalize itself.
Do you happen to know the history on how that little pocket came to be?
I don't, I'm sorry.
I'd be curious.
It's not the kind of configuration that we would normally allow in the city, so my guess, although I don't really know, is this was probably annexed at some point from the county, where they allowed this kind of configuration to go in. In fact, I think I was told by Public Works that people are on septic out there, so it's, I think it probably was an annexation at some point, maybe when we took in that part of the Bethel corridor.
Right. Interesting, thank you.
The Old Clifton Road Amendment, that is a little bit different. What we have out here are a number of parcels that are zoned for employment office and industrial uses. In other words, large office buildings with an industrial bent, an industrial park, service and manufacturing uses. But what we have running through here is Anderson Creek, and it runs right along the western boundary of the parcels that you have highlighted in your packet, and there's a ravine. And so most of the parcels out here that are zoned for industrial use are owned by two people, and they do not agree in what should be done. And so, but instead of one guy owning all the ones over here, and the other guy owning all the ones over here, they all own a hodgepodge, unfortunately.
Oh, boy.
So, no one has been able to come together so far, to get enough of an area to make doing an industrial development worthwhile. And because of that ravine, in order to connect the western and eastern parcels, someone would have to come in with a bridge, and a culvert, very expensive, and a lot of environmental issues that would need to be dealt with on those steep slopes. And so, we've had a couple of owners come in to talk about what can we do with our properties on the side that fronts Old Clifton, because they're kind of long, narrow parcels, and again, in order to make any kind of industrial development work, the thinking is, we really need more consolidation, and we need better access to the other side, which is probably just not gonna happen. And so, one property owner has been especially interested in, well, maybe I could go with residential instead, there's residential on the other side, on the county side, albeit at a low density, but he might be able to do some multifamily residential along here, where he could kind of consolidate, and leave the sensitive areas by the creek and the steep slopes alone, and, but get some return from his property. And so that's kind of instilled doubt a little bit with the people out there. And so what we're proposing is to change the zoning of those properties to R twenty, which would allow people to do apartments, townhome, some limited office, actually, like medical dental, and in thinking in that way, we could get some good access off of Old Clifton, it's a good corridor for residential, and then the back half, which does have access already, can go ahead and develop as it was initially planned to be for residential. And the last one is the Overlook Apartments Amendment. Overlook is an apartment development that's already approved, but what they've kind of been thinking as they move through their final plan development, is that, wow, you know, they have a lot of slopes and steep areas on the site, and what they want, and they own several parcels, and you can see, I think in your packet, there's a kind of a conceptual idea of how the buildings in this development will be laid out, there I think there's a hundred and six units, and what they're trying to do is to move a lot of the potential development off of the parcels with the most constraints, because of slopes, onto the parcels that are the flattest. But what that means is, in order to move that much density from one side to the other, they need to have the high-density development zoning on all of those parcels. So that's why they're asking for it, they're wanting to go from residential medium to residential high, which allows them to move that density, but it does not increase the overall density, or the number of units approved for the project.
I'm curious, have the surrounding neighbors been notified of this desire yet?
Yes.
Has any of them chimed in?
No, I've had, let's see, I sent out about two hundred notices, so to all of the properties that are personally being proposed for amendment, plus everyone within three hundred feet, so that's about two hundred, and I have had, I think, four calls. One was from a person who, you know, just was most concerned about what was going on with the creek, or the properties at Old Clifton. One was about this area, but they were more concerned about, well, how is this gonna affect me, and it wasn't about them at all, and they were happy with that, and a couple people were just calling for more information, like, how can I get my property rezoned, and stuff like that. So no, I have not heard anybody asking yet, but we're gonna be sending out more than one notice to people. And so, it may be that we get more comments in future from people who haven't responded so far.
Yeah. I was wondering.
On the steep side that they're gonna move it away from, do you know if they're gonna leave the foliage there, the trees?
If they, if they move their development off of it, they will be leaving it as it is on the steep slopes, unless for some reason they need to come in and restructure to prevent erosion and sliding, but I haven't been notified that it needs that. I think they're just trying to prevent needing anything like that.
I look at the cute little homes, are, you know, cute from Ariel, on Wendell Avenue, and I'm surprised that they haven't chimed in, because now suddenly they're gonna be looking at, what, four or five-story structure?
Um, I don't think it's, no, not that high.
Not that high?
Thirty-three feet is what they are approved for, which is the standard height in that zone, they didn't ask for any kind of variance or bonus.
Okay.
If there aren't any questions about the site specifics, I'll just go really quickly through the text amendments. These are all basically things that are just being updated in the comprehensive plan to reflect the changes that the city has to make to its various functional plans and programs, so that we make sure that all of our internal plans are consistent, and because in order to get grant funding, things that we wanna do to improve parks, and our transportation network must be in the comprehensive plan, and be thoroughly up to date. So we are incorporating the right-of-way acquisition plan for the Bethel and Sedgwick corridors into the comp plan by reference only, that's included in your packet, it's all those very vague diagrams and details, but that's what it is, it's the Bethel-Sedgwick Plan. The city's transportation improvement program has been updated to the most recent six-year plan, and that's what I left on the table for you, that wasn't available until today. And then, the parks element of the comp plan's been updated to include the new parks that we will have, the Rockwell Pocket Park down on the waterfront, and then the existing waterfront park expansion. So those are pretty, pretty simple, I think. But I'm happy to go over anything with you in the packet that you have any questions about.
Anybody else?
With the, with the right-of-way acquisition, was that taken away from, because I know this, you know, the city owns a certain amount of, like, from the road inwards, it's like in some cases, what, three or six feet? Is that right?
When you mean inward, or do you mean outward?
From, I mean, yes, out from the sides of the road.
Usually, in most cases, it's even more than that. Along there, there's a lot of undeveloped right-of-way in both corridors, but they, the long-term plan actually is to put in a number of roundabouts.
That's, okay, 'cause that's what I didn't see in the Sedgwick portion, that's what we were wondering about earlier.
Bethel, Bethel is being prepared first, and that's the one that the consultant should have a final plan to us in July. Sedgwick will be next, there is a long-term plan, and I think it has like seven roundabouts for that whole, that whole corridor, yeah.
So is that how we're gonna get, is that, because this one shows four lanes on Sedgwick, is that how we're gonna end up getting four lanes on each side?
I tend to think probably not, if the roundabouts are approved. With the roundabouts, they probably won't go with four lanes. But they have to kind of project out at this point what the right-of-way acquisition might need to be, because I think the city would be going for grant funding, as well as spending our impact fee money on this, and we have to be able to document that. So yeah, there would, there would actually be a number of properties that they would need to acquire land from for right-of-way, for either of these corridor improvements.
Okay, so then, like, for instance, the Sedgwick corridor, whatever funding would be wrapped up into that one to accomplish portions of this, is that right? Okay. Just real quick, from, I don't, I know we had this last year, but is there anything that, like, if I compare this one, this run from last year, is there any major changes?
Oh, to, from, on the tip?
Yes, sorry.
Um, let me look at that really quick, think about that, I wasn't thinking about last year. Tremont, no, no, no. I think they have put more money in for the Bethel, Bethel Road Corridor Plan and Engineering, because that's an active project, planning project going on right now, and we hadn't started that until just this year. So the funding has changed a little. The others, no. And the impact fee project list, which is on the second page, I think they have changed the priorities of a couple. But, you know, including the Bethel Corridor reengineering, but, no, these are pretty much the same as what was on last year. The Bay Street pedestrian segment, I think, has changed a little bit because of the redevelopment of Bay Ford, but again, that was on there already, it's just the funding has changed, and the scope will probably change a little bit, too.
So for the Bethel Road Corridor, where it says planning reengineering, so that's just, that's just for the, the cost for this one, it's just for that portion of it, it's not the actual follow-on construction later on?
It's, it's partly that, you'll see, we're talking about what we're spending in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and then, we will be pushing that out probably, I, I, it doesn't sound to me like they'd be getting started before two thousand and twenty.
But we'd probably be asking for federal funds for that one, too?
Yes, yes, we will.
The Bay Street pathway, phase start year two thousand and eighteen, what are they intending to do this year?
I don't know what they're intending to do this year, I think they're going to be doing design work for that pathway and the extension through the waterfront park, and I think they're eventually bringing it all the way around over here as a dedicated pedestrian path. But we're working, doing the final design, and then, I don't think they're doing any right-of-way acquisition for that, except I think they've already negotiated what they needed from in front of the hotel. So I think it's just, I think it's just getting the plan together.
Got it.
Darn.
I love that pathway, it's so handy. Looking forward to it being completed.
And so where we are with the schedule on this, is next month, the Planning Commission will be asked to hold a public hearing, we'll be sending out a notice of hearing to the same group of people, plus trying to really push it out there on Facebook, our website, you know, anybody else, you know, can think of a good way to get the news out there, we're glad to hear about it, but we'd really like people to come, and talk about the comp plan amendments, and, so we're trying to be as proactive as possible with getting the public involved early. So hopefully, we will have some people here next month to talk about it, and the Planning Commission will also be asked to give a recommendation, if you feel comfortable with where we're at on those, and you want to do so, and then it will move forward to council in July.
Alright. Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Carrie on item A? Okay, now we'll move to item B.
That is the public participation program for our zoning code update, that Nick and I have been working on this year. As, as Nick kind of discussed, as an overview at the last meeting, when he gave an introduction to his ideas on our update, we're trying to move from a traditional zoning code, to what is called more of a form-based zoning code, where we're working more with the buildings, and their relationship and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, rather than being very hard and fast, saying, you know, it's only this density, or something like that, and just trying to get more compatible uses within the same framework, and allow some flexibility in how our neighborhoods grow and change, and hopefully, you know, remain great places to live. State law requires us that when we're going to go through something like this, comp plan amendment, major development reg, updates, we have a public participation plan in place, and we'd be able to hand it out and say, this is how we intend to inform the public, involve them in the process, make sure that their concerns are heard, and that their testimony is adequately reviewed and considered when we make our final recommendations to council. So we've put this together as a draft, you're actually the first body to see it, and what we've tried to do is to say, you know, this is, this is the purpose of it, you know, this is the zoning code, as we're trying to update it, and the purpose, and the reason that we're trying to do the zoning code update is X and Y and Z, which we're trying to be consistent with our comp plan, and make sure that everything we do furthers the goals and objectives of that plan. We did a small breakdown on pages six and seven of our current zoning categories, and what we think the updated zoning categories will look like, there will be more of them, because I think Nick especially feels that in the commercial and industrial categories, we've lumped a great many things, not all of which are very compatible, into like, we only have one commercial zone at this point. And so a lot of things which range from very light commercial to pretty heavy commercial are all together, and maybe this isn't quite what we wanna do in the future, we need a little more flexibility as well for things like the industrial zones, break it down into light and heavy, and then also try to encourage some mixed use. We do have one mixed use zone right now, but we don't see a lot of development in it, and we're thinking that if we have different zones that have, again, more flexibility, and we're working more on building neighborhoods, rather than, this building is mixed use, that building is mixed use, but saying, here is an area that we kind of see having, you know, mixed, single-family homes, townhomes, apartments, little, like, neighborhood, like, convenience stores, or even a pub, or something like that, this is how things used to be, and with a lot of zoning, it's now, uses are very clearly separated and segregated, and we'd like to see a little bit more of those coming back together, especially keeping them pedestrian-friendly and walkable, yeah. We've tried to identify the audiences who would be interested in what we're doing, and that would include the public, our officials, service providers, associations like Pobsa, and, you know, others who have business interests, or, you know, serve the public here in Port Orchard, and then, of course, all of the state government of people, and the tribes, everybody who basically has some kind of concern or stake in what we're doing, make sure that they're all aware of what's going on. And so, on page nine, we've kind of set forth what we think are the methods and tools that we will use to get the word out to all of these groups about what we're proposing to do. So there's the presentations that we make before you and before council. One thing that we wanted to discuss with the Planning Commission tonight is whether you all will be interested in hosting an open house, as we, as we move through the process, just to kind of allow the public a more informal opportunity than a hearing, to come in and get some preliminary feedback, and let us hear a little bit back and forth. And I've kind of seen some nodding heads.
Yeah. Carrie, how would that be advertised?
We would put a notice in the paper, and we would put it on our website, I would again do a mail-out to all these folks, and anybody else who signed up to be in our mailing list.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Is it, I don't think it's a problem, but, and then, of course, I'd like everybody's opinion, too, I guess, but, would it be inappropriate for, like, myself to go onto the portage page and advertise it there as well, and push it out to those public forums, just as an information for everybody?
Oh, you mean like on Facebook, or, oh, no, that wouldn't be inappropriate.
Because you don't really see, we don't see much there, and I always, and whenever I do wanna think about something, I've already forgotten to do it.
I know that our city clerk, we have our own City of Port Orchard Facebook page, so she posts there, but I think she also posts on the Port Orchard Community Group, but, you know, those things are there, and then they're gone, and if you happen not to log on to Facebook for a couple days, you won't see these things. So I think the more anybody says, you know, in the community and gets the word out, the better it is.
Because I think that, I mean, we've had recently, in the past few months, we've had people come in here pretty upset about some of the things that they weren't aware of. So to see everything that, you know, you guys already have planned, I'm really impressed by it, I'm really happy to see that. The only thing I'd like to, what I'm concerned with is that it took us, what, two meetings to really get our heads around this, just, just the meetings themselves, and we had what, what's the gentleman that came in, and he gave us a slide presentation, he gave us a slideshow?
Oh, yeah.
Did the presentation?
Our consultant.
Now, those are online, we'll be able to make sure that we can also make, like, have some kind of link, you know, when you guys do the online posts, to those YouTube videos, so that they can actually watch those as well, and kind of get more information, because the handout is great, but I'm just not sure if, you know, if it's gonna be enough for a lot of people.
Well, what our consultants did was prepare the design standards, and yes, we do have links to those videos, and to the final design standards on our website, I don't know if they've been linked anywhere else. So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be working directly with those videos, because that's something that's already been adopted, but it stays on our development regulations page, where people can continue to access that, if they want, you know, to research that. But, for the zoning code update, I don't know that we're gonna have anything like a YouTube video, or a formal slideshow presentation, until we're somewhat further along, I do anticipate that we would have something like that eventually, probably for an open house.
Yeah, because for us, I know, leading up to that, that was part of, you know, what we went through, it was very informative, and it made it a lot easier to understand, too. I'm sure, I'm sure it'll work itself out, I'm just concerned that, you know, a lot of people won't understand it.
And I think that is, for the design standards, it was really important to have visuals, because you can describe how something looks, but what does that mean to you've actually seen it, and that, I think that's why they wanted to make sure there were a lot of illustrations and examples in there. And I know with zoning, it's difficult, too, because you say, well, we're going from this standard to that standard, and people are like, well, what does that really mean when a building's built? I don't know what that means. So, that's a good point, and maybe what we need to do is to, to have some visual examples, saying, you know, under the current zoning, you could build a building that looked like this. But under the new zoning, you could build something that looks like that, and maybe that would give people a better idea of, of the potential.
So I like the idea of it, because it, as, it feels like that we, as a city, get to decide, or have more of a, or more of a, more participation in the process, when we create something like that. And I think, you know, if people are able to see that, they would probably have, you know, we would gain more buy-in with it, and, you know, the more they understand, the more comfortable it would feel with it, because it seems like anything else that, things that people don't normally understand around here, I've come to notice, that it's like a conspiracy. You know, and that's what I'd like to avoid, so I'm, my biggest worry.
And I think we would, too, because if we don't hear about it on the front end, we hear about it after it's adopted, and that's worse, because then there isn't much of anything we can do to address people's concerns at that point, unless they appeal it, and that's, you know, not what anyone wants.
And it's by no means your, your department's fault, I just, I wanna make that clear, it's just, I think in general, that just seems to be what happens, because that's what I hear people talk about.
You know, and I've, I've had people call me, and, you know, and say, I thought about this for several days, before I called you up, because I knew I wouldn't understand, and I'm stupid, and I didn't wanna ask a stupid question, and, it's like, no, I, there are no stupid questions, and that's what we're here for, it's what we get paid for. So, I want people to call and ask stupid questions, I don't want people to feel like we, you know, are just gonna tell them, this is what's gonna happen, and you're just gonna have to deal with it. That's why we do something like this, is because we're doing this for the people of Port Orchard, so we need to know what they want, what they expect, so.
And the idea of doing the open meetings and the public hearings is all fine, but I think the average person is pretty busy, and so having this available for those who, on an internet basis of some sort, almost like a website of its own, or a slide presentation, the YouTube that walks them through it, pretty detailed, and/or a nice handout that they can, that they can get in mail, if they're not computer savvy, so they can study this at home, and then having some sort of built-in way to respond through that. You know, comment sheet on the back of a booklet, or email us after the presentation type thing.
And we will be doing a survey shortly, as well, I think the tenth is the date we have kind of scheduled for that rollout, where we kind of ask people a variety of questions, we think there's gonna be about twenty questions in that survey, about, you know, what do you think of, you know, Port Orchard's current state of development, what do you think are the major assets and the problems, and are there neighborhoods that you'd like to see certain things in, and, you know, so forth, and just try to get some feedback from people upfront, not only about what's wrong, but about, you know, what we think that we could be doing better over the long term, to help the communities and the neighborhoods within it thrive.
Yeah. You had mentioned, I recall, Jerry, she lives up on Kitsap Street, a few months ago, she was upset because she hadn't received notice regarding the new height, and, you know, and she's of a generation, and quite frankly, myself, I don't do Facebook, and we had discussed the mailings, and you mentioned there would be direct mailings, but when I look down below at direct mailing, it says it's only provided where substantial changes are gonna occur, is there any way that there can be a simple mailing that goes out pretty much to everybody? I mean, something like in the utility bill, or water sewer bill, can there be a little pack slip, much like when the Festival of Chimes and Lights is advertised?
I will ask about that, I don't, I don't know, I know that last year, when we did a number of rezones, you'll remember that, and I mailed that out to about fourteen hundred people, which was the affected property owners in the three hundred feet, I honestly don't know how we would deal with everybody in the city, I think we would almost have to hire a mailing service to do that, that took me three days. Yeah, but, I think we wanna make sure that, first of all, everybody whose property is directly proposed to rezone, definitely needs to get this notice, people who are in the adjacent area need to get it, and then I think there are a lot of interest groups that we wanna make sure that we keep on our mailing list, and that we keep informed, but also, as, as we said in here, you will get noticed, like, if you're, if you're going from, if we're just renaming your zone, if you're in R four point five right now, and you go to R one, there's not really that much changing about it, so we weren't gonna send everybody in town a notice, because you get that, and you're like, oh, 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 you know, what's changing on my property, I'm gonna get a bunch of alarmed calls from people who are just being told it's just a name change. But if you are, you know, currently commercial zoned, and we're about to change it to residential, we definitely wanna make sure you know, you know, not just that it's happening, but that you understand the ramifications of that. So if you have a problem with that, if you bought your property as an investment, and you were planning to build a store, you know, you know that when this is changed, that's not gonna be what you can build there anymore, so we really want those people to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah. So we will do whatever we can to get the word out, and, please, your feedback, and if you can think of better ways to contact people, or, you know, agencies, people who aren't in this list, let us know, if there's somebody you think, some group, some agency, some spokespeople. some spokespeople that they should go out to.
Uh, I can think of one, I had made note, Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
Under, uh, I should say, under section four, audiences.
Okay.
Shouldn't say so much to the list, but just. Big jump sections on you, Carrie, sorry.
Okay, I will find out who our current person is, our current contact person at DFW, and make sure that he or she gets notification.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Oh, so, something you said made, made this a little clearer to me in terms, so this isn't just about the whole, the public notice. Okay, my, my mistake. So it's just about the zoning code update, not about the comp plan amendments?
Right, we're actually doing two separate things.
Okay, never mind, because I was thinking.
Kind of a not-quite-parallel track.
Okay, yeah, it definitely doesn't make sense to send notices to everybody, then, because I see it's just really for those affected by the zoning code change.
Yes, it's going to be more people, definitely more people that will be getting notice for the zoning code update, just because a lot more properties are going to be involved.
Yeah.
Um, and who knows, there may be people that get a zoning update and a comp plan update, and I mean, why is the city sending me all this stuff? But, um, you know, hopefully, we'll reach as many people as we can on both processes, so.
Just one other comment, uh, section three, under approach, I guess, the, the paragraph, or the second full paragraph, if you will. Do the city's limited staff and financial resources, the city has chosen to, I'm not sure if that's meant to be adopt or adapt.
Adapt.
It is adapt, okay.
Yeah, um, the Teton Valley Code was prepared initially as a template by HUD, and the Teton Valley Cities adapted it for their own particular needs in their jurisdiction. And we're, we're a bigger city than any of the ones in the Teton Valley, and so we're taking that and using it for more urban model than, than what they have. They had a lot of things like stockyards and mining.
Oh.
And so, you know, we, those provisions aren't really in here, and, you know, yeah, we're just, we just are adapting it for what suits Port Orchard.
Okay, wasn't sure. Those are the only two elements I had, was that, and then section four, audiences, that and Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
Because I saw ecology and DNR were there, but Fish and DNR might have an interest being, because there's a fair amount of shoreline and stream.
Yeah, that's a good point, but we definitely need to send it to them. Okay.
Anyone else have any comments?
I thought it was pretty clear. I didn't have anything to add.
I appreciate the effort that the city is putting into notifying people about this.
And I don't know when the open house would be, but it sounded like you guys were at least open to hosting that, and I, I think that will be probably, I'm going to guess that that would probably be in August, around then. Um, just because that will allow the Planning Commission to work through on its own all of the draft zoning code, so we would feel that you all had a good handle on what's being proposed, um, that your questions have been answered, and that then you can talk with the public, um, when they come in, and we'll all be on the same page.
Sounds good. Anybody else? No? Business items will be closed, and moving on to item four, approval of minutes from March sixth, two thousand eighteen. I believe we will just table these until April, so that we have more members present who attended the March meeting. Excuse me, this is April.
Yeah.
No, this is May.
We're May now.
We're May. Okay, we're going to table this till June.[1744.30]